Hi Sherri, thank you for keeping me in line.
You're welcome for whatever good it does.
A lot of work.
Well, hopefully tonight is just, you know, it's formality, we move forward. You know, because it's really not supposed to be anything contentious, it just moves right to referendum. So.
Yeah. Yep.
Sherri, I'm John, I work with Mike, the motto?
Yes, hi John, how are you?
Just let me know, we just talked, that you're gonna handle this, you're probably just gonna let, we'll let everyone in, and then when you're ready to vote, then you'll sort of try to identify who's a legit voter.
Actually, as it turns out, John, I checked this afternoon on this, and we do not vote on anything that I would have to keep track of tonight. It's, it goes directly to referendum. So, yeah, after I talked to Mike, I was sort of rereading the rules about this, and they have the opportunity to discuss things, but there will be no vote taken on any of the questions, they go directly to referendum. So I don't have to keep track of who is here. I will take note of the people who are present.
Right, and I'm recording this, and so all the participant list will, I can get that to you if you need.
That's excellent, John, thank you, that will help a lot.
Okay, well, that's easier for me then.
Yes, yes, I'm so glad, yes.
Alright, so I'm actually double screening, so I'm gonna jump on the other thing, so if you need anything, just yell.
Bye.
Evening, folks.
Hi Catherine. Oh, you're muted.
Hey there, how are you Pam?
I'm good, how are you doing?
Very fine.
Excellent. I'm gonna turn this off because the dogs are in here again, and they'll be snorting.
Yeah, it's a good idea for all of us to have it off.
Yeah, okay.
Hi Judy, it's Angie. I couldn't hear you.
Sorry, I was muted hon, hi.
Okay, hi.
Good evening, folks, I've got 7 o'clock, I'm gonna give it an extra couple of minutes. Seems like numerous people joining us, so spare with us for two more minutes. Okay, folks, I've got 7:03, again, good evening, and thanks everyone for joining us. I'm gonna read the notice for the meeting. The electors and citizens qualified to vote in town meetings in the town of Ashford, Connecticut, are hereby notified and warned that a special town meeting/annual budget meeting will be held via Zoom on Tuesday, April 19th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. The agenda for the annual budget hearing/meeting is as follows. Item 1, to choose a moderator for said meeting. And, item 2, shall the town of Ashford appropriate the sum of $3,841,715 for the general government budget, and $1,1,455 for the capital improvement budget of the town of Ashford for the fiscal year 2022-2023. The total appropriation being $4,843,170. And, item 3, shall the sum of $22,863,000, excuse me, $22,863,429, the town of Ashford's share of which is $3,502,539, be appropriated for the operation and maintenance of the Regional District Number 19 public school system for the July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023 fiscal year. And, 4, shall the town of Ashford appropriate the sum of $8,337,427 for the Ashford Board of Education budget for fiscal year 2022-2023. Copies of the prepared appropriation budgets are available for review on the town's website. Hard copies will be available in the town clerk's office during regular business hours. As a side note, we'll also have some available on the table outside the front door of the town office building. Note pursuant to Section 7-7 of the General Statute of Connecticut, revision of 1958, as amended, no vote will be taken at said special town meeting/annual budget meeting upon items 2, 3, and 4. Rather than these items may be discussed at this meeting and shall be submitted to vote by voter tabulator at Norton Memorial Town Hall on Tuesday, May 3rd, 2022, between the hours of 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM. Absentee ballots will be available in the town clerk's office during regular business hours, and will become available tomorrow, Wednesday, April 20th, 2022. This has been respectfully submitted, William A. Faletti, First Selectman, Roger Phillips, Selectman, and Catherine E. Silversmith, Selectman.
I make a motion to choose Bill Faletti to be the moderator for the meeting.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I second Angie DeSanto.
Thank you, are there any further nominations? I'm gonna take a vote on this, all in favor of the motion is on the floor, signify by saying aye.
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 I'm gonna assume the rest of you are muted, but I'm gonna assume, are there any objections to the nomination? Hearing no objections. I will be appointed as moderator, and thank you for your confidence. I will now entertain a motion, discuss the second item on the agenda. Shall the town of Ashford appropriate the sum of $3,841,715 for the general government budget, and $1,1,455 for the capital improvement budget, so the town of Ashford, for fiscal year 2022 through 2023, the total appropriation being $4,843,170. Do I have a motion?
So moved, this is Catherine Silversmith.
Is there a second?
Angie DeSanto, second.
Thank you Angie.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, folks, any opposed? I'm gonna take that as a unanimous vote in favor of discussion of item 2 on the agenda. I'll just open with a couple of brief remarks. The amount being brought to referendum by the town for town government represents an 8.99% increase, totaling $316,000, excuse me, $316,920. The bulk of this is basically four items. We, in our contingency account in the proposed budget, we are requesting a dollar amount of $50,000 to cover potential fuel increases. We have been monitoring our costs and talking with our suppliers, both the superintendent of schools and myself and other staff, and it's impossible to get a handle on that. And the only thing that we recommended doing to the Board of Finance, and they went along with it, was setting aside a certain amount of money that would hopefully cover us for increases that were all, the increases we're seeing in our homes, with our vehicles, with our heating oils, with our propane and everything, we're seeing it only much more exaggerated, both at the school and with all of our town facilities, and that's what prompted that. There's also an contingency amount of $35,000. This is a typical amount that's set aside. We are presently finalizing union negotiations for town staff. Another amount in the Selectman's budget is a $38,000 appropriation plus benefits, which bring that total up to about $57,000 for a new position. This is a financial/clerk/floating agent for the town hall. As some of you may know, and some of you may not know, several years back, we actually had two people in our assessors' office, two people in our tax office, and we've been down to one and trying that, but it's stressing for our staff, it leaves us no margins for illness or leave of absence or that sort of stuff. The workload in our finance department has probably increased by almost 100% over the past 10 years. And we just feel that it's a critical need to help service the town in our most difficult positions as far as revenue and assessments and that sort of thing, and coordinating and doing the paperwork for all the many grants and that that have come up, particularly in the past few years, but that's why we've recommended that position. The other part of the increase is a request from the Ashford Volunteer Fire Department to increase their paid coverage from 12 hours to 18 hours. That amount totals $72,400. I think we'll all agree, emergency services are at the top of our priorities with taking care of our town folk and residents. The volunteer fire department should be commended for their years of dedication and all the work that they all do. But frankly, we're having issues with volunteerism and coverage, and it's not an area that we felt that we could neglect. And so we have supported that, and the Board of Finance has gone along with recommending that in the budget. Out of the $316,920, those items that I mentioned represent approximately 70% of that increase that the town is looking for. It's between 67 and 70%. The other amounts are basically covered. The additional amount is to cover contractual commitments. They're very minimal increases in our town budgets, other than the ones I just mentioned. There's a minor increase, although we even cut that a little bit in our registrar's office. That's always sort of a best guess estimate, based on referendums and special votes that we may have coming up, special elections, that sort of thing. So I would be happy to take comment on the budget and be available, and I'll call on Catherine to certainly jump in and assist with, and Roger if they'd like, with any questions that we may have. So I will open the floor to discussions, the only thing that I would ask you to do when you make your comments, if you would identify yourself, give us the street that you live on in town, we don't need a number, and try to limit your comments, at least for the first time, to three minutes. That will go for comments on all of the questions that we're addressing today. The floor is open. Don't be bashful now. No comments, I see no hands. Oh, we have one. Oh, we have one. Janet?
Yeah, hi, Janet Bellamy from Sunset Drive. I appreciate that uh our town is, has been well-run and I, I believe, and, and been careful about spending money. However, I think this is, this nine percent increase is, is it's just a lot for most taxpayers to bear at a time when people are having a hard time. And as you say, all, all all costs are going up for everyone. I don't know, is there, is there any money in a rainy day fund or any other place that you can tap to try and reduce this and help the taxpayers?
Well, I, 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 you know, I certainly understand your point and, and I know that the board of selectmen worked as hard as we could, as well as all of our departments. There's, we maintain a, a um a general fund, uh, undesignedated fund balance right now, and the board of finance this year uh went along and we adjusted that where we're maintaining a a ten point five percent uh balance of our total budget in undesignedated fund. And that is critical as far as we see, Janet. To leave that in place, particularly with, we've got um a couple of large bonding issues coming up within the next year and two. Primarily at the school with the roof project that's going on, with the solar project that we anticipate doing. Those amounts, historically, the rating companies, uh Moody's and, and, and the other national rating companies look for municipalities um to have a minimum between ten and twelve percent in that undesignedated fund balance. And we've been successful over the years to maintain our credit rating. And um, and so my, my only thought is to, to go to the undesignedated fund balance would jeopardize, we're concerned would jeopardize our credit rating when we end up going to bonding in the very near future. We have been able to utilize um the ARPA funding on some other issues that we've had come before us under general services. We had an auditing report come in from our auditors earlier in the year that we experienced a million thirty thousand dollar deficit over the past years as things they can attribute directly relating to the COVID situation. And because of that, there's been certain things that we've been able to pull out of the budget. A couple of them that come to mind, uh, they fall under the definition of governmental services. But a new bus for the school, we put into the ARPA proposal. Uh, the jo- a new Jaws of Life unit for the fire department. Uh, several other projects that would normally, we would consider in our capital improvement budget. Uh, one of them is the Pickleball Court renovations over at Ashford Memorial Park, or excuse me, Pompey Hollow Park. Uh, some upgrades in security fencing and some trail work at the Ashford Memorial Park renovation.
No, 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 no.
Excuse me?
I think everybody needs to be put on mute.
That wasn't me.
Okay. Work at Ashford Memorial Park, um renovations to the front entrance of, of Knowlton Hall. The uh, the surfaces there have become unacceptable for stripping hazards. We're gonna be redoing that hopefully this year. Some other uh projects have, have going on with the HVAC systems and the Babcock Library in Knowlton Hall. These are all issues that we would normally be considering under a capital improvement budget that we feel are, are addressable through ARPA funding. So Janet, as bad as the eight point nine nine seems, without the relief that we're getting from the ARPA fund, it would be much worse. And um we've, we scrutinized it and, and looked at it very closely, and believe me, I know everybody on the board of finance lost a lot of sleep and everything because we sincerely wanted to come to, to the town with something less than an eight point nine nine. But we felt that, that in all honesty, this was the budget that best suited our needs at the moment.
Thank you for explaining that. Go.
Any other?
Bill, just one more point of co- of clarification. The ARPA funds that we're talking about and using them for, for capital improvements, which are not part of that eight point nine nine percent increase. They're really the capital improvement budget, correct?
That, that's correct, but there are some items in there that would typically uh fall under some other means. If we could afford it through the capital improvement, we either have to postpone those things or, or pay for them in some other method. And um, thank goodness, we have the ARPA, the ARPA. Capital improvements, of course, have been paid for, capital non-recurring funds, which don't implicate the mill rate directly.
That's what I was trying to make sure was clear. Thank you.
Also supplementing those costs are things like state grants and, and things like that. So that capital fund does not have any implication on the mill rate. Any other comments? Judy Austin? You're muted.
Hi, Belle.
Hi.
I had a question for the um, the E O Smith um change for our share. Did that come out of the um, the total that we had spoke of for um region nineteen originally? For this budget here, the four point six six?
Uh, yes, yes, it did.
So it's down to what?
It's down to four point two nine overall.
Okay.
Uh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, let me correct that again.
Send the budget letter.
Yeah. Overall, it's down to, to four point three two, Judy. That was adjusted down as a result of that.
Okay.
A couple of other minor adjustments.
Okay. Just wanna make sure it was in it. And then, and then this is the highest increase Ashford has ever had, correct?
I can attest to that. You mean in, in the town government side?
Correct.
Or you, you mean overall?
Overall.
No, I know um when Pauline Faulkner was, was first selectman, um, we had just taken on E O Smith. And there was a uh an increase much higher than what we're facing right now. I think they looked at a uh, a four mil increase just as a result of increases in our town government education and E O Smith increases there. Um, I don't know if it's the highest ever, Judy. I, I can't say that for sure. When we, I know it's not the highest, but I don't know how many others that were, that might have been higher.
Uh, yeah, um, just point of order, um, the E O Smith budget is number three, I think, on our agenda. Not, not number two, which is what we're on.
Yeah, I, I, I think Judy's question, I took that as the meaning of an overall thing inclusive of what we're talking about.
I did.
Any other comments or questions? There's also detail in the budget books that, that are available both online and, and hard copy here at town office building. I'll also send some up to the school that give a, a broader explanation of the capital improvement budget, that one million, one thousand dollars. It goes on item by item. Uh, that particular list was worked on and, and much appreciated by the board of selectmen, worked on by the capital improvement committee. Uh, the process is that departments, including the town, uh, of course, the highway garage and the school submit projects that they'd like to see completed in this fiscal year. It's reviewed by members and there's members of the board of finance, the board of selectmen, the board of education. This year, uh, the superintendent sat in, our highway foreman are on that committee. The chief of the fire department is on that committee. We all had a, a probably half a dozen meetings and developed that particular project. But uh, if you'd like to see any itemized explanation, there is a detailed page towards the end of the budget book that I would invite you to take a look at. All right, not hearing any other comments, I will take the motion to go to item uh three, which is shall the sum of twenty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-three thou- twenty-two million eight hundred and sixty-three thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars. The town of Ashford's share of which is three million five hundred and two thousand five hundred and thirty-nine dollars be appropriated for the operation and maintenance of the regional district nineteen public school system for July first, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three fiscal year. Can I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Catherine Silversmith.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Janet Bellamy.
Thank you, Janet. I will call for a vote on that. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? I will interpret that as a, a unanimous vote. And we will open the floor for discussion. Again, as detailed in your budget uh books. We were lucky enough this year, thank the Lord, that we actually had a point zero three decrease in the E O Smith budget this year. I, I commend the E O Smith board um, and also the superintendent there, who I know has worked diligently on this. I'm not sure if any of our E O Smith members are here. Excuse me if I'm not seeing you, but is there anyone that would like to comment on that budget? Going once? Going twice? We will move on to the next question. I'd like to have a motion to go on to item four, which is shall the town of Ashford appropriate the sun of, sum of eight million three hundred and thirty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars for the Ashford Board of Education budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three?
So moved. I'll make that motion, Catherine Silversmith.
Is there a second?
Angie, just sec.
Angie, a second. There's a motion made and seconded on the floor. I'll call for a vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Hearing none, I will consider that a unanimous vote uh for discussion of item four uh that will be on the referendum. Uh, I'll open the floor. Jane, I see you there. Do you wanna make any comment? Jane Urban? Chairman of the Board of Ed, do you wanna make any comments or have you designated anybody to do that or leave it to your pleasure?
I apologize. I was just having difficulty getting off mute. Um, thank you, Bill. Uh, I just very briefly, um, the majority of the increase in the town of, in the school budget this year is due to uh contractually obligated uh salary increases for our staff. The only new thing in the budget this year is that we have a um math interventionist that um has previously been partially grant funded. And we would like to move his salary uh to the local budget since math is identified as a um area of focus for the school. We also, as the, as Bill mentioned, are seeing um very large increases in insurance costs and fuel costs for the school. Those are also affecting the, the budget um that we have submitted for next year. So um, those are just the highlights on, on why this is needed. And um Craig, I don't know if you wanted to add anything. Um Superintendent Kreller is, is on the meeting as well. Feel free to add, Craig, if you have anything else, but otherwise, thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Jane. Craig, I recognize you.
Thank you very much, uh, First Selectman Feletti. Thank you, Ms. Urban. Uh, Chairman Urban's comments were very accurate. The budget pressures are indeed the collective bargaining agreements, the health insurance, and of course, energy specifically, diesel fuel and home heating oil. So we are grateful that the town has put aside uh a reserve fund for the fuel issue, and we've worked well with the town to collaborate, come up with this budget, even though it's comparatively a higher number than in past years, uh, we still have to make cuts. So we appreciate the collaboration.
Thank you, Craig. Uh, I'll open the floor for comments or discussion or questions. Again, just to remind everybody, if you have any, if you just state your name, uh, street, uh, address, although we don't, the name of your street, we don't need your number. But I'll open the floor for any questions or comments. I don't see any hands. Oh. Jean, were you waving?
I was not, no.
Okay. Okay, going once? Going twice? All right, folks. Well, I appreciate everybody participating and um you know, the, the thing is with this budget and, and so many people, the board of finance, I know my board, I know the board of education, but also every board and, and every volunteer group that we've got in town and department has worked diligently and very hard and painstakingly to come up with this. And believe us, it, it hurts to be coming to the town with increases in times that are very difficult. But the main thing, whether, whether you uh support or don't support this budget, I encourage you to get out and participate. You know, I quite often have people that come to me and, and complain. And I'm sure Catherine and, and Roger have heard the same thing about the budget's too high or it's too low or whatever. And then quite often I'll say to them, well, did you go to any board of finance meetings or did you give the board of selectmen any input? Or did you go to any of the public hearings? And most critically, I'll say, did you vote? And, and you'd be surprised how many people say no. And this whole thing is about getting the majority of our group and moving in a way that satisfies that majority's wishes. So I only encourage you all to, to, I know the folks that are on this call are gonna be voting. Get your friends and get your, your, your neighbors out. Remind them of the vote coming up at six AM in the morning till late at night. So there's plenty of time on May third and um and let's leave it to the voters. And again, I appreciate all your help. I am going to move this meeting to uh referendum on May third. And again, thank you very much for your participation.
Thank you.
Good night, folks.
Night.